I'd like to now call the town meeting for 2023 to order. And we'll start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to offer a moment of silence for fellow townspeople who are no longer with us. Thank you. I'll now read the warning. Article number one is to elect a moderator for a one-year term. Article number two is to receive the various reports of the officers of the town as contained in the current town report. Article number three, shall the office of lister be eliminated and the select board authorized to contract with or employ a professionally qualified assessor in accordance with seventeen DSA two six five one C. Article four, to elect from the legal voters of said town the following officers: one town clerk for a term of three years by ballot; one treasurer for a term of three years by ballot; one select person for a term of three years by ballot; one select person for a term of two years by ballot; one auditor for a term of three years by ballot; one auditor for the remainder of a three-year term by ballot; one lister for a term of three years by ballot if needed; one lister for the remainder of a three-year term by ballot if needed; one library trustee for a term of three years; one library trustee for a term of two years; and a first constable for a term of one year. Article number five, shall property taxes be due and payable on the first Friday in the month of November. Article number six, shall the voters approve the 2023 total general fund expenditures of one million seven hundred and forty thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars, of which one million one hundred and fifty-three thousand three hundred and ten dollars shall be raised by taxes and five hundred and eighty-seven thousand two hundred and seventy-five by non-tax revenues. Previous year total expenditures were one million five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, of which one million eighty-nine thousand four hundred dollars were raised by taxes and five hundred and five thousand six hundred by non-tax revenues. Article number seven, shall the voters approve 2023 expenditures of one hundred and sixty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars for the Beth Northrop Memorial Library, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars of which shall be raised by taxes and thirty-three thousand seven hundred and forty dollars by non-tax revenues. Previous year total expenditures were a hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars for the Beth Northrop Memorial Library, one hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars of which were raised by taxes and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty by non-tax revenues. Article number eight, shall the voters approve one hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars for the support of Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department, set appropriation only to be paid by the town upon condition that the Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department submit to the town by November first, two hundred and two thousand twenty-three, a copy of its most recent balance sheet and bank statement for review by the town auditors. Previous year was ninety-two thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. Article number nine, shall the voters approve eighteen thousand dollars in support of the Fairfield Community Center Association, previous year was fifteen thousand dollars. Article ten, shall the voters approve a donation of three thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars for the Franklin County Home Health Agency, previous year, three thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. Article eleven, shall the voters approve a donation of three thousand dollars for the outdoor classroom, previous year was three thousand dollars. Article twelve, shall the voters approve a donation of five hundred dollars for Cap Crusaders of Franklin County, Inc., previous year, five hundred dollars. Article thirteen, to transact any other non-binding business that may properly come before this meeting, article fourteen is to adjourn. I would now entertain a motion to elect a moderator for a one-year term. Bridgette Riverton nominated, is there a second? Seconded by Laura Fullwiler. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing no objections, I would ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Bridgette Harigan Rivet as moderator for one-year term. Article number two, to receive the various reports of the officers of the town as contained in the current town report. I would entertain a motion to do so. Okay, Gavin's making a motion to get it started, is there a second out there? Seconded by Chairntur. All right, open to discuss and receive the various reports of the officers of the town as contained in the current town report. This article allows people to ask questions or clarifications on any of the reports. Any questions or discussion? All in favor of receiving the various reports of the officers of the town as contained in the current town report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any of those opposed, signify by saying no. Eyes appear to have it, the eyes have it, motion carry. Article three, shall the officer of lister be eliminated and the select board authorized to contract with or employ a professionally qualified assessor in accordance with seventeen DSA two six five one C. I would entertain a motion. Who was that? Oh, okay, Melissa, thank you, is there a second? Seconded by... Recognized, Mary Schreiderfer?
Could someone speak to this motion, please?
Part of the reason we want to be doing this, it's one, we need to hire people to be listers now, and the knowledge is required with it. Right now, we're going through a reappraisal to bring it back up to current levels, and the number we reported for them to keep it up and in place afterwards was eighteen thousand dollars. And we're going to use what we have already in that lister's budget to do this, and they'll third party, and there's nobody saying Uncle Fred was treated better than I was, or any of this, we're just properties that apparently, in their reappraisal at this point, they found several buildings that were never permitted or in place and allowed to be taxed. So it's a way of constantly making up the amount of money we really need in taxes, and making sure everyone's paying on something they've got or don't have. They've got a building that's fallen down, it will be listed as now gone. So that's part of our rationale, we think it'd be more consistency in these appraisals. If you come in, at least you can feel comfortable you're dealing with somebody that knows what they're truly talking about, because they're doing it in new towns and it's never... And a lot of towns are starting to go this way, and we really thought we were going to do it, it'd be time to get on board before we suffer all the towns, because they have the same problem, getting people to run for the lister's position. So that's why the board has suggested this, and that's what we opened for this afternoon.
Other questions or discussion? Lisa Hardigan?
Gavin, is that eighteen thousand dollars equally scheduled to be the term?
That's yes, that's the number we're working, I mean, it may vary, you know more.
It's made, that is what they estimated it to be, if they're going to charge us by hours. So they had to come up with an estimate for the first year. Their feeling is, it's a good estimate, that they shouldn't go over it, possibly go under it. But until we get a year under our belt, we don't know exactly what it's going to be here.
Is that on a yearly basis, and eventually moving on?
They are going to be doing what the listers normally do, as to inspect, go through the building permits each year, and go out and measure the new builds, the additions. If somebody comes in and has, wants their property checked because they feel there was damage or something, they want to reassess, that's what they're going to deal with, is all the new construction, the new builds, sketching in, and valuing all of the buildings.
So it's not a set fee every year, it's what you...
It's based on how many hours they spend doing the work in our town.
And that's the future, right?
Just like the listers now, you pay the listers now.
You just want to believe in the state.
I believe we had twelve thousand dollars in the budget last year, and it didn't get used, and part of it, this common level appraisal, that's why we had to have it reappraised again, because it dropped down a hundred and eighty percent range or something. I think that's why, if you read the message, I think, two weeks ago, it was on the difference, say, on the city, town, and Fairfield, how the school tax was going to go up in each town, because of this common level appraisal, big town, property values have gone skyrocket in the last two years, random list haven't kept up with. So that's one of the major reasons for this, and I think of that, because Fairfield had the lowest amount that was going to increase. Can remember the numbers, I think it's eight hundred and some odd dollars for St. Olmond City, around six for the town, I think Fairfield's three hundred and some odd dollars. Again, the way the state taxes and the school taxes, you've really got to keep this common level appraisal thing up and get people to listen.
Chairntur?
Is the completely appraisal of the town completed now?
It will be in the next couple of months. Once it is complete, booklets will go out to everyone, showing everybody's old value, the new value, there will be instructions in the booklet on how to agree if you don't agree with it, but everything will be mailed out once it is approved.
Okay, so from here on, until somebody decides we need another general reappraisal based on market?
No, it's actually based on your common level of appraisal, and we actually were mandated by the state to do it prior to all of this, so...
But I understand, but there will come a time when there'll have to be another general reappraisal.
If it's kept up with, and there's, you know, you, if they can do it, an internal reappraisal, if they see things going, and not have to do, you know, you can make adjustments to everyone.
Mm-hmm.
But to do what we're doing right now, hopefully that's a long ways down.
The first of my question is, going forward, after this general appraisal is completed, it will be new builds, permitted additions, additional structures, and people whose cars fall down, they could then say, please take them home?
Yes.
Both of those.
Other questions? Are we ready for the question?
Are we on the mini driver that we had today? Do we have someone? It just goes through. Linda was still working in the office, so there's somebody representing. Linda's still be working in the office as part of this lister group we're appointed to do this. That way there, there'll be somebody in town that you can actually go to, you know, so that if she's got a question, if you got a question or something of that nature that needs to notify this group that's going to work, there'll be somebody to contact. There won't be just all of a sudden, no listers, and we have to do everything from the outside source. I got that right?
Yep, there is a lot of day-to-day work, current use, the downloads from the state for the homestead declarations, there is a lot of day-to-day stuff that happens, that you need someone in the office to do. This is just contracting someone to do the, to basically deal with the building permits that come in every year, and go out and assess those properties. It doesn't take away the internal day-to-day lister's duties.
Any other questions or discussion? Are we ready for the question? All in favor of the office of the lister being eliminated and the select board authorized to contract with or employ a professionally qualified assessor in accordance with seventeen DSA two six five one C, all indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The eyes appear to have it, the eyes have it, motion carry. To elect from the legal voters of said town the following officers, we will begin with one town clerk for a term of three years by ballot. I would entertain a nomination. Linda Hodak has been nominated and seconded. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing no objection, I would ask the clerk to cast one vote for Linda Hodak for town clerk for a term of three years. To elect one treasurer for a term of three years by ballot, floor is open for nominations. Amanda Forbes has been nominated, is there a second? Seconded by Melissa Manson. Are there any other nominations? If there are no objections, I would ask the town clerk to cast one ballot for Amanda Forbes for treasurer for a term of three years. Floor is now open for nominations for one select person for a term of three years by ballot. Gavin Ryan has been nominated, is there a second? Seconded by Linda Hodak. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing no objections, I would move the clerk cast one ballot for Gavin Ryan as select person for a term of three years. Floor is now open for a select person, for nominations for a select person for a term of two years. Brian Dewey has been nominated and seconded by Damian Boomhaver. Are there any other nominations? Hearing no objections, I would move the clerk cast one ballot for Brian Dewey for select person for a term of two years. Floor is now open for nominations for one auditor for a term of three years. Any nominations?
I nominate Jean Person.
Mary Schreiderfer has nominated Jean Person, is there a second? Seconded by Tom Hargan. Are there any other nominations? Hearing no objections, I would move the clerk cast one ballot for Jean Person as auditor for a term of three years. Floor is now open for nominations for one auditor for the remainder of a three-year Yes?
Diane Tracy.
Diane Tracy has been nominated by Jean Person, seconded by Mary Schreiderfer. Are there any other nominations? Hearing no objections, I would move the clerk cast one ballot for, is it Debbie Tracy? Diane Tracy, sorry, Diane. All right, we'll skip the next two for listers, as they are no longer needed. Now the floor is open for nominations for a library trustee for a term of three years.
Nominate Peter Burns.
Peter Burns has been nominated by Michelle Feiner. Is there a second? Seconded by Melissa Southwick. Hearing no objections, I would move that the clerk cast one ballot for Peter Burns as library trustee for a term of three years. Floor is now open for nominations of the library trustee for a term of two years. Susan Magnin has been nominated by Melissa Southwick, is there a second? Seconded by Michelle Feiner. Are there any other nominations? Hearing no objections, I would ask the clerk to cast one ballot for Susan Magnin as library trustee for a term of two years. Now the floor is open for nominations for a first constable for a term of one year.
James Constantino.
I'm sorry?
James Constantino.
Oh, thank you, James Constantino has been nominated, is there a second? David Person's the seconded. Are there any other nominations? Hearing no objections, I would move the clerk cast one ballot for James Constantino as first constable for a term of one year. Article five, shall property taxes be due and payable on the first Friday in the month of November? I would entertain a motion. So moved by Mary Schreiderfer, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Toby Fullwiler. The floor is open for discussion. Yes, please.
Well, certainly glad to see people here, we wondered how big a group we might have. It's been, what, two years since we've kind of had this quarterly report, what we've been up to, what the town has been getting done. One thing I'm glad to say this year, we can say that, except for the library, all the municipal buildings, the cabinet, the new hall, the garage, the fire department, and the salt shed are all being built. So twenty-year period, pretty much got a new infrastructure in town that hopefully should last a long time. And there's money in this budget to maintain these buildings, so that they don't slide down the middle. Just trying to think of some of the bigger things, well, some of the challenges we've had this year, if not, the increase in fuel, and the increase in materials for road repair work, it's one reason our budget is up. And I think some of the elements offhand, a lot of it was labor, it's gone up, just to get people with CDLs, it's really been a challenge, and we've been very fortunate, we have a good road crew, so. And the prices of new trucks is, I'm sure the fire department will explain to you, but it's nuts, and they've gone up, many more two-year rates, and costs are up here, and it was, we saw a system on one of those trucks, if we had to replace the whole thing, it was going to be thirty thousand dollars just for the exhaust repair. So we've been trying to make things rotation, trucks are getting moved out about every seven to eight years. They extend warranties, so we have these computer protocols, it's under warranty, cover all those kinds of things. This year, just completed this new bridge on the Jewell Road, it was a big culprit, that had failed, I think, a year and a half, two years ago, and it was had to be replaced. Of course, now they want you to put in bridges. They did, the latest one night, came to the select board meeting, told us that they're paying for a new bridge on the parry, hopefully that'll go on sometime next year, I believe it will do. And that was, they came to us, and they were going to run the whole show. We were trying to encourage them to move up the road, go to the Chester Arthur Bridge first, but they weren't quite into that one yet. That's one of the major ones coming along. We've got big projects going to go on down by Robbie Dan's barn, that major culprit, holes are put in, sixty-two years ago, and they're starting to fail. We did one last year by Rob Brandon's place, that one got replaced. This one down here is a big project, because of the water flow that goes through it. I mean, we got so many things, we put some of this ARPA money out in the water districts, so head new meters, I think, in Fairfield Center and East Fairfield, generator, major requirement here, I believe East Fairfield's got to move on the building, the water storage building, some federal requirement that they have to do, so we had some money towards that. Pretty much the rest of that money, half of it right now, that's left, I believe, will be designated to do that project down by Robbie Dan's. It's going to be probably a four-hundred-thousand-dollar project when it's all done. Those are some of the major things we've got done in the last few years, just so you kind of get an idea of what we're up to. Is there anything I missed? You guys something? Well, the fire department, that's true, they've got, now they can fill their own oxygen tanks, I'm not sure what the word is, they...
Is it called cascade system?
It's a cascade system, so when they're out to a fire, and they use their oxygen tanks up, they can come back there and refill. They other, used to go to other towns, use their systems, I guess they make a nomination or something, but now, they've got it right there, so when they do trains and that, they don't take off, it's a air tank, it's partially filled, can run out, so that was more of that ARPA money, the white stuff. That's kind of a breakdown of what we've been doing, try and keep the thing, try and keep game pieces as real as we possibly can, you know. This year, we just had no control for some of the stuff. One of the big things we're going to, I've discussed later, you know, the business wanted, is what we're going to do with the white school down here. That thing now has a cost of twenty-seven thousand per year. The heat bill this year was just nuts, even keeping it down, so we've had an energy audit done, or it's in place, and we're supposed to get results sometime this spring, but to bring it up to eighty-eight quarter months and everything else, I mean, I don't think it's on our list, if you look at a million-dollar deal, if you did all the stuff required. I guess we're trying to find out, and find out what the community later on, is ideas and ways about it, or what people really think they ought to do with the buildings, and we're open to suggestions on that stuff. Is there anything else you want to come? We'll take questions, try to answer them all again, so, about the budget. Yeah, all that's true, the community center in East Fairfield, I forgot about that, they got money up there to help with... They got money up there to help we work inside the building, they needed it. So they got storage for their food shelves and kitchen that functions. And some more upside is going to be signed in, so they actually know where it is. And I think, yeah, they did an outside pizza oven with some of this money. And I guess as we speak, that's where the state wants the parks and vehicles for that rail trail. Some are going to be coming up there this spring, but I think the state's assuming the cost of all this is not more than us. I guess that's, again, if you've got a question, we'll try and answer it for you. So now my little business.
It used to be that if you paid your taxes ahead of time, you got a small percentage off, like I got a four percent.
That pretty much ended when the state, uh, the school taxes went in. Because the main reason was, we offered the discount, but the state wouldn't take it. So basically, somebody else's, everybody else's taxes went up. And that, and also think that county, we were the one that were not doing it, so it wouldn't work into the computer program either, that was part of the rationale.
Hi, I thought I heard you say that some of the money went into maintenance funds for the, for the buildings in town, which is fantastic.
Well, it's, it's building or budget, so that we may be in the building. You know, like, and I'll just throw in a right thing, ten thousand for the town first office. Some years it gets, some years other years if you choose building this. So we're trying to make sure that these buildings stay up in shape, like the town garage, remember last year, you know, those doors in the house that opened and closing? They took the doors, turned them, yeah, got some new doors from used part of the older doors, too, to fix up the other four doors, so that they're all in good shape and work in condition. So we're trying to make sure that we spend this one of these buildings, and then we may pay.
Great, so my question is, I don't know very much about the restrictions that came with the money from the federal government.
Oh, this wasn't ARCA funds, so that, that was just out of your budget.
Are you going to talk at all about the ARCA funds?
Well, just as we mentioned, some of the things they had been used for so far, I mean, some towns, we used part of it to kind of balance the budget, believe thirty, thirty-five, thirty-five thousand for this budget, to try to keep it into a realistic rate. Some towns use a lot more of their ARCA money just to run them down. If you're under a certain budget amount, use it for running downs.
Are you, are you allowed to take any of those funds and simply set them aside for future use? Or do they have to be used in a certain time?
They have to, I believe they have to be used by a certain time. Twenty twenty-five, they have to be contracted out or something, and then this completion based on projects, they have to be done by.
And could you describe the process that the town is going through to figure out how to allocate those funds?
Pretty much just like what's on so far, people have been making requests. So we're trying to do longer things like these water meters at both ends of the town, you know, those kinds of things in the community, something that's a long-term. Some things we probably couldn't do, uh, other monies that we didn't have, so we had for all means.
Thank you.
Laura Fullwiler?
I just have a question. I think it is within the last year, there was trimming about this height. I know on Ridge Road, I've seen it on other roads, it was almost like brush hogging, like that. Could someone explain the rationale? At first I thought, oh, it's like around a curve, but it was on straightaways, and it left just raw, just raw vegetation. Could you explain the rationale for what that, why that's there?
Main reason we're doing that is keep the brush from out of the road. If it comes in, it keeps going further and further into the roadways. Next year, you probably won't even notice it, because it'll fill back in again, is to keep it from advancing further in the roads, and also the trucks don't hit it with the wheels, mirrors, all those kinds of things, so they have a, a straight shot, and they can see where they're going with the tone.
Thank you.
And it also drives the road out a lot. Many places we've done that, where roads used to get wet and have wet holes in them, they're, I'm not saying they've gone away, but they're not as bad as they were, because now the sun actually gets into them, not those roads, so that you don't get the ice staying in certain spots.
Mary Schreiderfer?
Could it be cut the over down, you know, with the height and select that be because of obstacles that make you there?
It's pretty much used running the machine. Sometimes you're going to have to make a couple of passes, because I've ran that machine myself, and there's only so much you can do on one pass. So you kind of make a way around, and then the next time there'll be some more of it. And it really is, it's really made a difference on a lot of roads, as far as the road's actually on thyme, some people are driving, there's no, not the ice that used to be underneath it. And the roads dry out faster in the spring, when the sun's hitting them, they just dry out, you know? And it's easier when you come in, work on ditches and those kinds of things, and that stuff that's bad. Basically, it's, it's really helped out the town a lot, trying to maintain the roads up.
So another time around, you might go and take a walk.
They also have to stay low, store walls.
Well, we're speaking about that.
When you're, when you're close to that tractor, it moves very fast, because you're constantly moving.
Any other questions or discussion? Ready to call the question? All in favor of property taxes being due and payable on the first Friday in the month of November, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Article six. Shall the voters approve twenty twenty-three total general fund expenditures of one million seven hundred forty thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars, of which one million one hundred fifty-three thousand three hundred ten dollars shall be raised by taxes and five hundred seventy-eight thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars by non-tax revenue? Previous year total expenditures were one million five hundred ninety-five thousand, of which one million eighty-nine thousand four hundred dollars were raised by taxes and five hundred five thousand six hundred by non-tax revenues. I would take, entertain a motion. Rambo Cash made a motion, and a second, please. Larry Stenak has the second. Floor is open for discussion on approval of the twenty twenty-three total general fund expenditures of one million seven hundred forty thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars, of which one million five hundred, one million one hundred fifty-three thousand three hundred ten shall be raised by taxes and five hundred eighty-seven thousand two hundred seventy-five by non-tax revenues. Questions or discussion? Any other questions on the floor? Any other questions, many of voters? Ready to call the question? Okay. All in favor of approving the twenty twenty-three total general fund expenditures of one million seven hundred forty thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars, of which one million one hundred fifty-three thousand three hundred ten dollars shall be raised by taxes and five hundred eighty-seven thousand two hundred seventy-five by non-tax revenues, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Article seven. Shall the voters approve twenty twenty-three expenditures of one hundred sixty-two thousand nine hundred fifty-four dollars for the Beth Northrop Memorial Library, one hundred twenty-nine thousand two hundred fourteen dollars, of which shall be raised by taxes and thirty-three thousand seven hundred forty dollars by non-tax revenues? Previous year total expenditures were a hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred fourteen dollars for the Beth Northrop Memorial Library, one hundred fifteen thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars, of which were raised by taxes and thirty-three thousand nine hundred twenty dollars by non-tax revenues. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Toby Fullwiler, and a second. Seconded by Phil Higgins. Floor is open for discussion on the twenty twenty-three expenditures. Yes, Melissa Southwick?
Based on up-to-date information about the library's fund budget balance, I would like to make a motion to amend the original motion to instead say, shall the voters approve twenty twenty-three expenditures of one hundred seventy-three thousand four hundred and four for Beth Northrop Memorial Library, one hundred twenty-nine thousand two hundred and fourteen, of which shall be raised by taxes and thirty-three thousand seven hundred and four by non-tax revenues and ten thousand four hundred and fifty reallocated from the previous year's fund balance.
Okay, so moved, is there a second on the floor? Seconded by Laura Fullwiler. Okay, uh, oh, the floor is open for discussion on an amendment, which would be, shall the voters approve twenty twenty-three expenditures of one hundred seventy-three thousand four hundred and four dollars for the Beth Northrop Memorial Library, one hundred twenty-nine thousand two hundred and fourteen, of which while we raised by taxes, thirty-three thousand seven hundred and forty by non-tax revenues and ten thousand four hundred and fifty reallocated from the fund balance. Is that correct, Melissa? Uh, floor is open for discussion. Sarah Allen would like to speak. If there are no objections, we can suspend the rules for Sarah Allen, our librarian, to speak to the question.
Didn't want my back to you. Thanks, I'm Sarah Allen, she's the library director, and I just wanted to explain this, this move. So the audit is almost complete, and there was recent movement of grant funds, and so we now know that the library's previous year's fund balance is that ten thousand five hundred and forty. So we'd like to reallocate that fund balance to our surplus operating fund revenue line and change the budget's repairs and maintenance line, expense line by that same amount, so that we can do some crucial sidewalk repairs. This action does not change the amount that the library is asking for from the taxpayers. The sidewalk along the entrance to the side of the building next to the handicap spot has sunk significantly at the curb cut next to that handicap spot. It, it now is no longer ADA compliant, and it fills with water that then freezes in the winter. We've had two falls already at that spot, so it's a, it's a serious safety and liability issue for the library and therefore the town, since we are a municipal building and a municipal library. So Mo and his crew were grateful they put in a small patch, but it definitely will need to be repaired this spring at a cost of probably upwards of fourteen thousand dollars. So that's why we're asking for your approval to use this, this fund balance for, for that repair. The reason that the library has this fund balance this year is because it's made up of four things, so it's quick and clear. It's that, it's a remaining eight hundred and ninety-six dollars surplus from two thousand twenty, a seventeen hundred and nine dollars surplus from two thousand twenty-two, and then in two thousand twenty-one, we budgeted thirty-seven eighty for a property insurance expense that did not get paid until two thousand twenty-two, when we paid the double, a double bill. And also you, last year, approved that the library could use the two thousand twenty-one surplus to transfer into a capital reserve fund for the library. But we have really a great non-tax revenue building from grants this year, well over seven thousand dollars. We also got some direct donations and a friend's gift, and we reduced spending wherever we possibly could. So we were able to pay for that extra insurance payment and the transfer to capital reserve out of two thousand twenty-two funds, which gratefully leaves us this library fund balance to pay for this crucial repair. So that's why we're asking for this change, that again, doesn't change the tax request. And after, if this, after we've discussed and vote on this amendment, then I'd be happy to share a little more about the general library budget itself.
Other questions for Sarah on the amendment?
Do we have quotes, what does it cost us for that right here, construction outfit?
Uh, we have one quote so far. We'd like to seek, seek more, but it's, it's over fourteen thousand dollars for that quote.
Other questions or discussion on the amendment? Ready to move the question and vote on the amendment? Right, the amendment is for the voters to approve the twenty twenty-three total general fund expenditures, oh, sorry, of, sorry, expenditures of one hundred seventy-three thousand four hundred and four dollars for the Beth Northrop Memorial Library, one hundred twenty-nine thousand two hundred and fourteen, of which shall be raised by taxes, thirty-three thousand seven hundred and forty by non-tax revenue and ten thousand four hundred and fifty reallocated from the fund balance. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. The amendment carried. So now we'll discuss the amended article, which is, the voters, shall the voters approve the two hundred, two thousand twenty-three expenditures of the hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred and four dollars for the Beth Northrop Memorial Library, one hundred twenty-nine thousand two hundred and fourteen, of which shall be raised by taxes, thirty-three thousand seven hundred by non-tax revenues and ten thousand four hundred and fifty dollars reallocated from the fund balance. Is there a motion on the floor? Motion by Michelle Feiner, is there a second? Seconded by Melissa Southwick. Floor is open for discussion. Sarah?
Thanks, so I'll just share a little bit about what the budget looks like this year. Hopefully you can all hear me okay. Uh, we've had a banner year at the library after coming out of, you know, with people reemerging from the pandemic. Hopefully you've read our letter in the town report, seen our fancy infographic, but very quick, we've had well over twelve thousand visits this year. Data from twenty-one shows that we're the second busiest library of all eleven libraries in Franklin County. We've got more visits even than St. Almond's library, with that community six times our size. Circulation of physical materials is up thirteen percent. We continue to increase our collection size and the number of patrons, the people that use the library. That door just is constantly opening and closing, it's fantastic. So of course, in addition to all of the, you know, great books, we offer tons of services and computer and wifi, that's been really, really important, especially during and post-pandemic. Tons of programming, getting people back together, databases, classes, audiobooks, ebooks, just all sorts of things, space for meetings, and of course, there's tons of kids that come in after school and have a warm place, safe place to be. That's really important to, you know, and this is also, you know, on top of all of the administration and finances and property management and collection development and everything else, that Wendy and I do that business and of running the library. So regarding this year's budget then, last year we were flat funded and asked for no tax increase at all, even though we had to deal with significant inflation. So without that fund balance reallocation factored in, the overall budget increase is only seven point four percent, and our additional tax increase is thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty dollars, very modest. We're doing our best this year to keep discretionary spending categories either flat or reduced because of those non-discretionary categories like heat, lights, same thing as the rest of the town is dealing with, with inflation. So there is an increase in staff costs this year. As I said, we're the second busiest library in the county. Seven of them are bigger communities than ours, but we have the fourth lowest number of staff hours, and those three libraries that have less staff hours are open way fewer hours a week than we are. Cause I'm four days a week, and the other, the assistant is sixteen hours. So this budget includes three whopping extra hours a week for the assistant librarian. I could use five more of her, but we'll get her three more hours. And there's also increases in staff compensation and the insurance costs for staff, because, but still the proposed pay is still below the averages and the mediums for all the libraries in, most of the libraries in the state and the county. So anyway, we feel this is a really conservative, responsible budget to fund what is the most utilized public space in this town. Happy to, happy to answer any questions you have. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Any other questions or discussion about the library? Ready to call the question?
Call a question.
All right, all in favor of approving the 2023 expenditures of $173,404 for the Beth Northrop Memorial Library, $129,214 of which shall be raised by taxes, $33,740 by non-tax revenue, and $10,450 reallocated from the fund balance. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Article number eight. Shall voters approve $117,225 for the support of the Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department, set appropriation only to be paid by the town upon condition that the Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department submit to the town by November 1st, 2023, a copy of its most recent fund balance sheet and bank statement for review by the town auditors. I would entertain a motion. So moved by Tom Harrigan. Is there a second? Second by John Gordon. Floor is open for discussion. Uh, Mo, uh, John Schreider?
Just, just the $1225,000 value increase. Is there a specific, uh, is there a specific item that? That we use that for? Is that just the property stuff?
It's kind of building on that. It was a truck that we put in place, uh, like 10 years ago in the anticipation of replacing some of the trucks. Right now, the pumper tanker is located in Fairfield's bottom end, probably about 10 years ago. Starting to show a age. Engine two is a main truck here in the station, Fairfield Center, it's been 20 years old. And we're just trying to build the parts and don't, don't ask for all money and work on the wall.
Got you. Thanks.
Yeah, just, just so you know, we, we bought a F-520 mini pumper five years ago. It cost the same, was it $200,000 or roughly, five years ago. 18 years ago, we bought Engine 2, which is a full-size fire truck for all kids, seniors, school all the time. That was $192,000 15 years ago. And we're anticipating, we're gonna look at the truck, uh, Thursday afternoon. Uh, it's a pumper tanker. It's not a fancy, you know, full-blown, uh, Engine 2 like we have now. And that is looking to be 450, 500,000. That's kind of what we're looking at in the planning. We're evaluating our options and, um, before you find the answer this. That's, that's kind of what we're all looking at.
Other questions or discussions? Yes, your name, please.
I would like to know, uh, if there's any training that we can provide that was, if we have, uh, anything else going on so that people who are in charge of all of this, uh, are able to, uh, try to follow you or any questions?
Yes, yes. We have a, a monthly business meeting every Monday night, and once or twice a month, we get together for two to four hours. We work with the trucks. You see the guys around Fairfield long, two weeks ago, uh, working with the trucks. Uh, we have a training planned with Fairfax, you know, Liveburn Building, you know, or, you know, some of our neighbors. Yeah, new, yeah. We had over 250 hours of training last year, you know, that we kept notes on, we have books on. Uh, last year, the year before, we have five guys, four guys, run through a county-sponsored firefighter long training for us. So this, this could welcome us up a little bit.
That was over 90 hours.
Yeah, that one course was over 90 hours.
Just each individual had to be 90 hours of training for that fire incident.
I just wanted to make the comment, the last two or three years, the firemen have asked me to moderate their annual meeting form. And I've got to tell you how impressed the number of young people that they've gotten coming into that fire department. Because most every other town you listen to, they're seeking help, they can't get volunteers. And I just think, I believe you've got seven or eight fairly new members. So I think as a community, we're extremely lucky to have a volunteer fire department that puts as much effort and is also able to recruit younger people because they have to take a lot of training in order to become a full-time member of. So I'd like to publicly thank them for what they do, but also for being a fireman to our community.
Sheila, did you have a?
It's actually Paula.
I'm sorry, Paula.
This may be a stupid question, but we were talking about always buying equipment, which I think we have down here. Do we have any equipment left in these Fairfield fire departments built that we need to be concerned about? Or are you totally 100% put together here in Fairfield?
No, we're, we took, my, to me, it's, you know.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, anchor needs to be out of service up there. There's a danger of, 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 of. At least we had some market money to save. Small group, you've got it. One truck over there, better truck over there. Beautiful pool. And go back to, to, uh, see what the members of the department want. We're going to make sure. I think here, here, flash, the fire department's always better to give at least a truck over there. So if there's any sex, we'll, 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 we'll.
Responsible, responsible helps to have one in that area.
That's another one I've developed, because we don't have a lot of people that respond. I don't know. We do currently have one very active, very good new member over there, so it has full trace. Decreased response size over there, we have to.
Other questions or comments? Yes, Damian?
The other thing is, who would, even if we ordered that truck today, we still have two or three years before we'll have that.
Any other questions, discussion? Ready to call the question? All those in favor of approving $117,225 for the support of the Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department, set appropriation only to be paid by the town upon condition that the Fairfield Volunteer Fire Department submit to the town by November 1st, 2023, a copy of its most recent balance sheet and bank statement for review by the town auditors. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Article nine. Shall voters approve $18,000 in support of the Fairfield Community Center Association? Previous year was $15,000. I would entertain a motion. Motion by Sharon Tru, and a second, please. Second by Susan Knightman. Floor is open for discussion. Steven Tru?
Thanks. I want to speak about the Fairfield Community Center. Uh, firstly, I want to thank the people of Fairfield for their long-running support of the center. The volunteers we see week after week, they make you, make what we do happen, and we're grateful for that too. We're also grateful to the town in large. The ongoing financial support we receive from the town is fundamental to our success, and I want to thank you all personally. Participation in the Fairfield Community Center's programs and celebrations has increased as the COVID pandemic has receded. More community members are at access of the food shelves and the community meals we offer. More area youth are attending the after-baby school programming and the Black Creek Adventure Camp, summer and vacation camps, and after-school programs. We expect more demand of our services in 2023. As the pandemic has receded, so have many assistance programs. This is why I'm asking you today to vote positively for Article nine. For more than a quarter century, the Fairfield Community Center has helped to meet the ever-changing needs of our area residents. And your assistance today will allow us to continue to enrich the lives of our whole families throughout Franklin County. Thank you.
Any questions or discussion? Yes, Sharon Tru?
I'd like to just say one thing, in favor of the pandemic, believe it or not, it got us outdoor concerts, and they have been a treat. Little kids dancing on the grass, people picnicking. Um, I hate to say I'm happy for a virus, but it brought us outdoor concerts. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Are we ready to move the question? All right, all in favor of approving $18,000 in support for the Fairfield Community Center Association, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Article 10. Shall voters approve a donation of $3,971 for the Franklin County Home Health Agency? Previous year was $3,971. I would entertain a motion. So moved by Tom Harrigan, and a second, second by Mary Schreider. Floor is open for discussion or questions. Hearing none, are we ready to move the question? All in favor of approving a donation of $3,971 for the Franklin County Home Health Agency, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Article 11. Shall the voters approve a donation of $3,000 for the outdoor classroom? Previous year was also $3,000. I would entertain a motion. Motion by Damian Blumhauer. And a second by James Constantino. Thank you. Floor is open for discussion or questions. Yes, your name, please.
Tori Crossman. Could, could someone speak to what's used during the outdoor classroom? Uh, what goes on?
Is there someone here that can speak to the outdoor classroom?
I can speak for my part of the portion of it. My name's John Baxter, and been involved in sugaring and education part of it. And before that, the, the outdoor classroom, we, we, and, uh, the stipend I would get from this, you know, the past years has gone into paying for, you know, equipment and everything else that goes under running it and upkeep of the. Education is the big thing about, you know, we talked about being outside. And, you know, these kids at very young age, from kindergarten, preschool, all the way to eighth grade, are benefiting from this, from the education as they grow, so goes up through. And this year, you know, I think eighth graders will be out there in, you know, doing the sugaring themselves, doing the sugar house. The old lads will be in pockets, so sweating later.
Julie, did you want to add something? Julie, what?
Only another, probably another question is the, uh, I found a lot of departments, um, that we're able, students can handle. And, you know, and then, uh, vegetables to, um, contribute to, 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 you know. And they try and as well, you know, the, the.
Uh, yes, Kelly, Karen?
I'm not sure exactly what the 3,000 is going towards, but just working in the school, I know, like, the plant, um, planting is the sugar house. They also make, uh, close, I think, to 25 pies for the community center at Thanksgiving time to add to the baskets for new families. They learn how to make all kinds of different foods from their home produce, like, uh, salsa and, um, roasted vegetables that they have tastings with for the kids during lunchtime and that kind of thing. So, um, it's really just kind of exposing kids to, uh, a craft that they might never be exposed to.
Any other questions or discussion? Ready to move the question? Okay, all in favor of approving a donation of $3,000 for the outdoor classroom, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Article 12. Shall the voters approve a donation of $500 for Cat Crusaders of Franklin County, Inc.? Previous year was $500. I would entertain a motion. Name, please.
Eric Bushy.
Motion by Eric Bushy. Is there a second? Second by John Gordon. Floor is open for discussion or questions? Yes?
I don't want to seem ignorant, but can you tell me what Cat Crusaders is?
I didn't hear that.
I don't mean to feel ignorant, but can you tell me what Cat Crusaders is?
Julie? Julie?
Um, so Cat Crusaders is an organization that volunteers to, um, they're kind of catch them, actually, there are these operations, but we also, um, cats, um, had personal experience with that. A neighbor got hurt, was defied, barrel passed. They came in the next week after the pandemic, and they have, um, those, it's just a great service.
Uh, John Gordon?
Yeah, they did the same in my farm, where they had to have 25 crafts to get homeless back. They did catch them all, and they prepared them all, and so now I'm down to only about 10. So, more, a little more manageable, but yeah, it is a, it is a great service, especially for those of us that had farms and wind up, you know, collecting cats.
Yes, Jermaine, please.
Jane Barry. Um, they've helped me too, because I live above Fairfield Pond, and every fall, all of a sudden, there's all these cats that I think people have as pets during the summer and kind of leave behind, and they come, and, uh, I only had like seven, but they were all gone soon.
Any other comments or discussion? Any call of question? Oh, yes, your name, please.
Um, Kathy Brennan. Given the concept that everything is more expensive and understanding that a lot of people use this service in our community, I'd like to propose a $100 increase in that amount to support that organization that I know is completely voluntary. Um, and I'd like to entertain a motion of $100 increase in that amount for that organization.
All right, so from what I'm seeing, you want to amend the motion to re-approve a donation of $600 for Cat Crusaders of Franklin County, Inc.?
Yes, that's correct.
Is there a second?
A second.
And your name, please.
Christine Corvance.
Okay, we have, the floor is open for discussion on the amended motion to approve a donation of $600 for Cat Crusaders of Franklin County, Inc. Eric?
I just want to add to what everyone else has said. It really is an incredible organization, and it is all volunteer, uh, and I know they would greatly appreciate you, uh, increasing the $100. I know that my partner, uh, also a Fairfield resident, she's very involved in the program, and I think that the last two years, three years maybe, we've successfully fostered very fine breeding kits or cats from the program, and all, with the exception of one unfortunately just simply passed away, were spayed and neutered and found new homes through a cooperative effort in the local ham shelter. So, I couldn't agree more with what everyone has said, and, uh, many thanks to the volunteers from the different communities, including this one, for part of that, uh, and they would definitely appreciate the $100 increase.
Linda?
I'd also like to, um, remind people that there's a tremendous amount of science about how much barrel cats damage they do in our environment. It is unbelievable, I don't have the numbers to rattle off, but if we're all for a lot of more birds sitting in our trees and our yards and biodiversity, we've got to slow down the reproduction of barrel cats. So, I, I understand that we're trying to fight the, um, discussed, but if we can just neuter and spay a whole bunch too, that makes those numbers plummet out in the environment, not, I think that's a thing that we can all remake over time.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
So, I got a bunch of skunks in my barn. Skunk, I guess.
Any other discussion or questions on this amendment? Call of question, thank you. All right, all those in favor of approving a donation of $600 for the Cat Crusaders of Franklin County, Inc., please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please indicate by saying no. The amendment, the ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Amendment carried. So now we'll vote on the amended article, which is shall the voters approve a donation of $600 for Cat Crusaders of Franklin County, Inc. All in favor, please indicate by, or actually, is there any more discussion on the amended article? If not, we'll call a question. All in favor of approving a donation of $600 for Cat Crusaders, Crusaders of Franklin County, Inc., please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please indicate by saying no. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it. Motion carried. Article Thirteen is to transact any other non-biary business that may properly come before this meeting. So the floor is open. Uh, yes, Tori Crossman?
Yeah, so we, I know a few of us were at a meeting recently about subdivisions in Fairfield. Um, I haven't been in Fairfield that long, but, um, you know, I've read about Francis Horgan and his, uh, treat the land like you'll live here forever. Um, I, I don't know that the town development regulations really reflect Fairfield, um, and I say that because there's really no limit to how many houses a subdivision can put in Fairfield, um, and I don't know that Fairfield wants to look like Fairfax or, or Swanton or something else, so I don't really have a motion, um, other than to kind of open to the group and, and ask, I mean, what do we want to see for Fairfield as far as the number of subdivisions? I know Dan Pipes once told me, and this is a good analogy, if you go have some drinks with Jesus, Jesus will buy you the first two glasses of wine, but after that, the devil's buying you drinks. Um, and that's kind of how I view subdivisions too. It's, you know, there's kind of an element of greed in there, um, and I think a lot of people in here kind of, you know, have that same sentiment. Um, you know, there's one thing about having homes for, for elderly housing, um, and affordable housing, and, you know, building a lot for your children, or if you want to retire in a house and add a lot, um, but then there's something else which we're kind of seeing now, um, you know, maybe people from other towns coming in, trying to make a quick buck, so, um, I don't have a motion to put forth other than if anyone else has any comments on, on maybe an amendment to the development regulations. Thank you.
Uh, yes, David Turp?
Yeah, just to, uh, follow on, uh, what, Tori, 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 sorry, said, um, that there is a process to amend development regulations, and that's, that, that process is undertaken through the local planning commission. So if you, um, and I can, I can feel you have some passion about this issue, you know, the best way to implement change in development regulations is by addressing it with the planning commission who are charged, under state law, to, um, amend bylaws. That being said, and this is technical, uh, what I believe you're talking about is not a subdivision, but a separate type of development, PUD.
Yep.
But, yeah, I mean, it, it is an important thing. I mean, I, I personally have a feeling that, you know, the town of Fairfield has excellent zoning bylaws, um, but there, there is a process in place to amend.
Uh, Linda?
Who actually writes the town plan that sets a vision for us all, uh, for these things? Hey, I do.
You just got volunteered, didn't you?
Really? I'd love to be a part of such a thing. Our, we do, we were at the meeting that we're talking about last night, and we learned so much, and our, our way of thinking was to encourage so much, but I think it's the future that we ought to think about now, be very clear about what the future we want, because once precedent is set, then we're all very neighborly. One thing I noticed last night was that there were a lot of really non-confrontational people, like people who don't like friction, who stood up and talked last night, and I know them in many ways, and I know that they would only speak from the heart if they really felt like what they were seeing felt just wrong. And I think that as a community, it's okay to have conversations of little friction, but I, I think it's time for us to get on the same page for what we envisioned 20 years from now for all our kids, the things that we love, that we can preserve, some things we can't. But I, I'm just asking because I, I volunteer to be a part of such an effort, and I don't, I just don't know the system enough, and that's why I ask, who makes it now?
I think we voted on this two years ago. There was a grant for regional planning mission that worked with the planning zoning board, and there was public input, there was four meetings that I don't want, for, you know, for input into it, and they worked with regional planning to make sure they did it right, tried to do it right, tried to improve people, uh, different problem, I mean, most of them are trying to get some building going on because there's a shortage of housing. I mean, I'm not supporting this thing one way or the other, I'm just why we are where we are with it. Uh, I believe everybody was asked to participate in that, and there was a public vote on it. Like I said, there were three or four meetings on it, and there was an update, and they can be changed. You know, it's not a lifetime thing, once you do one of those town plans, you have to go through them and go through a series of public meetings, and then have it voted upon again if there's changes needed on it. But, I mean, I think everybody's encouraged to, uh, be part of that, so that, kind of, we get what we hope we're going to get to.
I think it's a little bit hard when it's so hypothetical. You know, last night, we all saw a real thing sitting in front of us that we could contemplate, and I know that things are aspirational until they are actually sitting in front of you, and so I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm just, you know, hoping that we can, I, I can be a part of something like that for sure, and I guess when it, the opposite was two years ago, it, it would seem too hypothetical for me to admit, but now it's, it doesn't.
I'm just trying to give you an answer now, where it came from, how long ago, it's okay, I believe it was two years ago, or three now, but, uh, yeah, it's, again, there are five-year plans, unusual, but sometimes they get amended, isn't it? Things change, you know, it's like, the only reason there's zoning in Fairfield to go back in is one time was up in Rome, I was in, and they were on track, but, I don't know, vacation homes up there. That's the only reason zoning ever got even, yeah, so. We just got the numbers, 2021 to 2029, so, but they can be amended, they can be voted upon again, I know that.
You're fixing two things. One is the town plan, right, which is the one that's, uh, and the bylaws are, can be revised at any point soon. That's what was seen done, we needed the whole bylaw to, 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 and, I mean, and make amendments to the bylaws amended.
I'm sure that has to be at a public meeting, right, and voted on, and find frames.
There is, there is a process for that, yes.
Yeah. Well, just try to give you what information we got.
Uh, yes, Lisa, pardon?
Yeah, this is a poll that was sent, I'd be happily involved as well, I unfortunately wasn't at the meeting last night, but I did quite do a valid, um, and I guess I'm still a little puzzled about how only four of our groups are going to make these changes versus the others. It's just something, some of the meeting last night did address that.
What do you mean, you should, is there going to be another meeting?
Yeah, there's, there's got to be another meeting next, uh, next month.
It will be addressed again on April third?
Yeah.
And we encourage that, everybody that go, go into that, any, any interest, whatever town, this is a very big thing.
Was the west corner meeting or to the zoning?
Zoning. So the zoning, that there's a proposed large development, i- on agricultural land, prime agricultural land, which is highly critical.
So I guess, I wondered, within our town, is there a way this message is getting out there, because I know there's a lot of people that are still unaware of what is happening in this, so the town.
I'll, this is, I'll listen.
I can just say that the agendas for all of the meetings, town meetings, are on our website. The town plan is on our website, the zoning bylaws are on our website. Um, if you can visit www.fairfieldbermont.us on a regular basis, all of that is on there. Um, we also, if you just swing by, every, every few days if you want, we post those at our office, so you can come by and, and find the agendas and also the plans at our office.
Uh, yes, Mayonnaise Over, Mar. With all due respect to everyone that's in the process, we appreciate all the work that everybody's done, all the work that everybody will do, um, in relation to the proposed PUD that's on the table now. When you look into the town plan and the zoning board regulations, town plan clearly states that we're going to preserve our open firelands and whatnot, uh, but that's quickly brushed aside. The PUD that's proposed now, there, if you look into the bylaws in the zoning regulations, I hope I'm saying this correctly, it references certain areas, you know, that these criteria have to be met, but if you go and look in those places, that criteria is not in the report, so I would caution that if this is to go through, saying that it's setting precedent, I wouldn't want to see it go through without all of these things amended and put in place so that everybody's comfortable that everything was done, so that every standard was met.
I'm wondering if everyone's aware of what this is all about. This is, you know, it's a, it's a, uh, pub up on Church Road, past the cemetery, eight or nine houses on the 22 or 21 acre lot. I believe there's proposed eight or nine wells, common septic system in park, there's two on the hillside, so it's outside the village core, if I understand it correctly, and it's, it's on decent, decent memory, I think. So that's what's brought a lot of concerns to a lot of people, because I'm sitting there, I'm sure that some people are saying, well, that's what this is all about, and that's what, at this time, is what it's about, so zoning and the planning commission had a meeting last night about it, and they had quite an attendance, and people voicing their concerns, so, yep, and that's the place for it. So, just so the people that are sitting wondering what it's all about, and that's as best as I can talk about it.
Is our town mission that we have to validate this, our town mission? Mission statement?
The town plan, Melissa?
That's the town plan. The town plan gave for this, gave for any, uh, building or dog, which is validated already, which, um, but there's, um, concerns that the zoning rights don't properly reflect this state, so. We put up this bunch of papers, the records were being done, two times in the last ten years, in the plan, two times in the last twenty. So now I'm delighted to run that one through. Hopefully we get lots more, but.
Linda?
I'd like to change the pace a little bit here, and I'd like to recognize Virginia Horrigan Sanchez, Dick Horrigan for coming out today to be a part of this, because I may be wrong, but I think they might be the oldest two sitting in this room right now.
Any other discussion? Yes?
So I probably cut a lot of words, it didn't have any meaning to what I was trying to say, I guess. So, in our town plan, our land is all, um, broken up into five different districts, the village district, the agricultural districts, and whatever the remainder are. Four of the districts have clear standards that go along with them. In our town, in the regulations, there are no standards where agricultural, so one would read that and assume that we have no standards of what you can do with that, and that's kind of what, one of the things that we addressed. The others, you know, I, I can assure you, my concern with this property are the obvious, I don't want to lose the beauty of the place, um, I'm a neighbor, I don't really like it, I'll say that out loud, you know, I don't want a bunch of houses beside me in that configuration, but along with that, there's a lot more to this story than, than just, you know, that upper level, that's much more important to me.
Uh, yes, Lex, Mar.
I'll, I'll just say something that impressed me that came out of it too, and, and that's relevant to today as far as budgeting. Bill Patel stood up and reminded us that projects like those are very, very expensive, and it's very easy for them to kind of fall to pieces in the middle, and he suggested we have a bond on this, so that if it, I mean, just to make the road workable for fire trucks and things like that, it all gets very complicated. If the water, it's only one quarter mile from the town water source, and people stood up and had stories about water problems, that the developers said, oh, we've never heard of any water problems, and the whole room groaned a bit, so forth. I just think we've got to think about this, pass the zoning part of it, and just think about it as a town, what risks are we going to pay if we allow developers to put this kind of heavy, um, use on land that may go wrong and may, I mean, this could, this board could have to figure out that sort of thing later. Anyway, I would just encourage everybody to get as informed as they could about this, and I was sitting on the sidelines for 20 years, so I'm sort of ashamed to admit that, that Chuck and I didn't take the time to give more of how this, but I never felt better than right today to be in Fairfield and watch this unfold, and it's so lovely, and thank you all for caring, and that's about our community and our future. So I don't think there needs to be friction, it just needs clarity.
Any other non, non-biary business for discussion today? Sunny?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd probably step in on more agreements with all the people here put together. What happens, let's rely on these people who own property, property they own through each generation. What you're talking about, like, the first article, what you bring, the item is talking about, you're going to bring somebody in, the outside, the, I'm a good person, probably, probably not sure, that's the first time they've ever seen it, whatever, and what you're talking about on this last article, is somebody saying what you can do on that property. And that property- And that property, lister can be, there's a very difference in the value. If you can build on it, it evaluates, or what you're gonna sell it for something else. Somebody else can tell you what you can do with it. You look at whatever properties, some of those, I don't know what happened, is up there, was it twenty-one acres, yeah?
Yeah, that's in that range.
Okay, twenty-one acres. What do you think the property worth that they can't go?
I don't think, basically. There's a lot of money, kind of, there, to sway up, to sway up, pardon?
So anyway, that's what you're looking at, you're, you're looking at telling somebody else, some other person, what they can do with the property. And if the price is cash, is that lister gonna cut your frigos? I've never seen it happen. That's what I got to handle.
Well, I just, I wanted to speak, and with the boardists to speak, for the town that's here, the old white school then. We're just trying to get some guidance on where to go with that thing. You know, and it's used, I mean, bounce back and forth. Tom and I were on the school board years ago, you know, it was closed one time this edition, and then it could be open use for that. And now it's pretty much empty, except for, uh, direct department uses it some, and the historical side, it started on one side, doing some more to it. But it's a big white elephant, and we're just trying to look for some guidance on that thing, on what majority of people want to see done with it, or what could be done with it. So we're open to hear about this. Like I said, we're probably now, it's roughly twenty thousand a year, so I know the fuel prices here just went nuts on it. So not much insulation, the windows been worked on before, you know, when you get in the outfit, the attic part, much of the upboards. We're just, again, you could sink so much money into it, but I guess we're looking to try to get some ideas for long-term plan for it. Keep it, just keep it running, and, uh, it doesn't amount to anything, it just gradually settles to itself. Again, we're open to ideas, the whole board, we're just trying to get some guidance from thousands of people.
Laura, phone one.
Just an observation, I hear Gavin saying we are looking for some guidance, and I also hear from all of you that people have very strong feelings about some building. So just some guidance from you, if there is all this concern or opinions, where do we go? Do we look, do we look in front porch forum for the next zoning meeting? Do we keep track on the website of, you know, the select board meetings? Um, it would be really helpful if, if you could just put out, um, something to make sure everybody is alerted to some of these big issues, but that's what I mean, people want to, an opportunity to hear more and to speak more, that's my only comment.
We meet second, fourth Monday of every month.
Is that where people need to come?
This night right now, it's not even so important, because I believe it's the first of every Monday of the month. Everyone's on, I'm on.
Did everybody here in our town wish I'd out to the first Monday of September? And select board is the second and fourth Monday.
Inside cover.
Okay, but it's not everybody, not everybody uses the computer, so that means, great.
Inside covers the town board has.
Right.
The regular meeting meetings.
Thank you.
Uh, Lisa, pardon?
Yeah, I think, I think what Laura's asking, and I have to agree, is, you know, it might be on the inside cover here, those meetings, but if front porch forum is a really well-used resource, but I think probably the majority of people here are aware of it, probably use, you know, just posting something on there, um, by the town, I think would be very informative and useful to a group of people that might not necessarily get to these, be able to attend these meetings, um, just to give people awareness of what's happening then, um, I just think this would be a nice thing for everyone.
Uh, yes, Danny?
I think what, what they're really asking, honestly, is what do you want to do with the building in the town? The problem is, the building has to move from the location it was at to where it currently is, so therefore you cannot gain historical transfer. It's not ADA accessible. I mean, I'm on the rec committee, and we're very grateful for the fact that we do have the space down there. Honestly, it's a lot of waste of space. It's, it's a big building, you know, it's no different than living in eleven, eleven around the farmhouse, we only have two kids. I think what they really want to know is, do we continue having a rec committee and historical, uh, committee in there and spending twenty thousand dollars a year? Or do we need to find a historical society, rec committee, a different place, and either that building basically becomes an end? Or do we want to put a bunch more money to make it ADA accessible? I mean, I could be wrong, depending on what you guys are asking.
No, I, we've got to start the discussion somewhere. We're spending over twenty thousand dollars a year on building that. You guys leave the room, sometimes a month, there's another girl, there's a class there, a couple times a month. What are we doing with that? Do we get murdered? Look, if you don't have it. We've got to start the conversation somewhere.
Uh, Julie?
Um, with this select board interview, does it stress?
Going back to the town meeting today, or the subdivision, or the rest, somebody wants to be involved? I don't think anybody on this board is going to need people for rec private, or listeners, or, you know, if anybody wants to be involved and prepared, so looking at the options, probably need it accessible, and so let us know which options are.
So I'm looking at the old town clerk's office, and I know my sister Shyla invested a lot of money, and we personally, we drew a bunch of lights and all that, and I made that into a type of building now. She's currently moving out of it, and they've already got people that want to move in. Wouldn't it be wiser to do whatever work it takes, even though it's gonna cost us money, to make it, you know, accessible, and then make it rentable? You know what I mean? Then to leave it as some store that just keeps taking money away from us all the time? She did that stuff building, and that's useful, and we're not huge, but they're gonna, the next tenant's gonna pay more than she paid, and they'll pay the lights, and they'll pay the whatever, and they have insurance themselves that they have in front. Can't we sort, and no one costs us a little money, or a lot more than the store that keeps getting picked at every year, and all the money that keeps coming out of it, right?
And that's part of the reason why we're looking for ideas, right? You have one, this building is in the middle of the school here, so every day from eleven to two, you're gonna have two hundred kids running around outside, and, you know, traffic parking, sewer. Maybe, maybe.
Well, they have to be a good neighbor to the school, that's true, they have to be able to be, but I just, there's obviously some emotional attachment to the town when they're having that building. See, they just want to bring up, you know, the roots, and carry down, and have anybody get stuck too. There should be some value to getting it up to code, using that money right off, getting it up to code, and then getting it, you know? Office space, you know?
Karen, Jesse?
I know that, uh, a lot of times in society, we look at things and we think it was better. I'm somebody who appreciates history and where we come from, and we've got a lot of really nice infrastructure now, as Gavin mentioned earlier, a lot of new buildings that we're very proud of for our community. But that building represents some of our history. I know sometimes it's hard to put money into an old building, but I think we should look at that possibility, and what, what resources might be available to us? I was not aware, um, until Damien spoke, that it wouldn't qualify for any kind of grant funding, is that what she said?
Historical grants, because it's not the, it's not the location where it was built.
So they hold that against the building because our forefathers had the ability way for modern equipment to move that from a previous site to where it is now, to me that's incredible. But, okay, so maybe there's other, maybe there's other sources that could be explored. But, um, I guess I would like to go on record as somebody who, um, would like to have the town look into, um, what it would take for us to preserve the building. And I don't know if it would be a good home in the historical society or something else, um, but I'd be eager pursuing what some options might be, and utilizing that as, as part of our council.
Tori?
Yeah, so I guess I can speak for the historical society. We originally, I, I love a building, and I, you know, I originally really wanted to save it and use it. And for a little while, you know, we did some work on one of the rooms. It just turned out, we didn't quite get the volunteer base to completely finish the room that we wanted to use. Um, and then, you know, we kind of got used of the, the, uh, town clerk's office in the downstairs, we have a museum in there, um, and we have a lot of artifacts and stuff like that. It is very nice, because whenever the town clerk is open, that room is also open. So if people want to come in and do research or look at artifacts, um, they can do that. So that's kind of why the historical society has moved away from the common school. I, I will say, I do love the building, but I also can see where the select board is coming from. I, I think, I, I know we're projecting this at the select board, but I think it's all for us. If you know of anybody that has a group, you know, Boy Scouts, or, um, you know, a youth program after school or something like that, um, I, I don't know that it makes sense to do all these repairs until we have a group that will fully appreciate and use the space. Because right now, it really isn't being fully utilized. But I love the building, so, you know, if you know of anybody that, that just needs space to do something on like a weekly basis, I think that's kind of what the select board is getting at. Because if not, I mean, it's, it's hard to justify it.
It's kind of a chicken and the egg, though, because you kind of have to have the fixing done to get certain people in there. So where do we decide to jump off and do something? If that's passion, if I'm a woman who lives in a house that's 170 years old, I agree with what you're saying, I have a little touch deep in the past, in our past, you know, world from. I'd like to look at it too, but I think, I think you need to do certain things too. Even if it's the basics of basics, just a little chunk of money, just to get it started to see, you know, to get people to see that something's being done. You know, if you don't do something, nobody notices, you know? And so there's gotta be something that's a little flashy out there to make people know.
All right, uh, Linda?
So we looked into shared workspaces, this new trend in kids my daughter's age. They, during the pandemic, they all work from home, and now they're getting itchy to be with others, and they're way more collaborative than, than my generation just in general. Have we looked at creating new shared workspaces? Because I tell you, that little, little fairfield there, that here is just no idea for that. We've got vendors to go for coffee or lunch at, we've got the, the grocery, little grocery store for sandwiches. It could build into something, I just don't know if we've looked at it. And that's not a very costly thing to push, to renovate for, because all they really want is little bitty cubicles that they pay two, three hundred dollars a month to, to go to whenever they want, and, um, and then be a community with others when they're there and they're working part of it. That seems to be a new trend, I just wondered if we've looked at it towards that.
The fridge store.
Oh, they have a fridge, I, I've heard that, I've heard that. All right, well, maybe it's theitis of a bigger thing.
Woman in the corner, Nancy?
Kelly Stone, I just wanted to reiterate what Mary said about the school down there. Um, I think it's really important to keep in mind that something like that, once it's gone, it's gone forever. And I think it's really important as a town to continue to have that and have that connection to the past. And I don't think you want to end up like Bakerfield with rhythm, where it's so far gone, it's there, you don't know what to do with it, nothing you can really do with it. And Tori said about, um, like groups of kids, what about the TFA tech center? Like right now, they are working over at Erdau Valley Rehab and Knowles. Is that something that could potentially work, have them come up and do work, get experience?
Overall, that's what we're asking now, we're not in Bakerfield's position to be pulled over.
Right, that's not the place anybody wants to be.
Let's be proactive, let's do something, school's trying out for it, here to go.
Yes.
You go across the border.
Uh, John, check remember?
So where was the school originally? Did I know? Okay, then let's move it back up there. You know? We're, we're awesome, thank you all.
Tori, cross.
I'll help you pull it, John. So I just, just for everyone, for when you are talking to people and thinking, like, you know, the tech connections group, um, right now, there's the two main floors, uh, two huge rooms on, on the main floor that you walk into, those are perfectly usable. Um, so those are, you know, heated, uh, the windows are reasonably new, there actually was a, a grant to replace windows, I don't know, tw- twenty fourteen, I think, um, something like that. It, the problem is, the problem is the upstairs room, which is a big, I don't know if you've been up there, it's a big dance music room, it was. Um, there's no ADA access to that, right? So being it's a town-owned building, there's kind of issues with maybe hosting activities up there. So, um, just keep in mind, when you're thinking of groups that can use these, there's two big rooms, um, but then you got to get a little creative with getting to that first top floor, um, because that is an expensive fix for ADA.
Kelly?
Uh, I just wanted to say, I think everybody has a lot of great ideas, and people are passionate about it, so I think Julie's suggestion was a great one of maybe getting a study through together to come together for people who have the, the time or the connections or the ideas to talk about what some of the options are. So it's not all on the select board, it would be about people who are really invested in it. So I really wanted to bring back up Julie's idea of a study through that.
All right, any other non-binding business for today? Danny?
Tori said it's not used very much, but there actually is. We do have a lady, Garry Raven, who does do an exercise class in there, Monday nights, Wednesday nights, I believe Saturday, or whatever time, whatever time. I mean, there, there is a lot of use that could be used on a building, but it's good to have this discussion to really find out what your passion is about this building, if you want to move forward. The biggest, uh, hurdle is the ADA accessibility. Fortunately, it has not been, uh, put in the position of where it's become an issue yet, but it's only a matter of time before it does. I mean, the building is currently used, but not to capacity that probably could be, but they're also asking to be the volunteers, they want to put in time to put that, and there's only so much time in the rec committee hat right now.
Any other non-binding, Tori?
Sorry, sorry. This is another article, so moving on. Um, so the state recently messaged me, um, uh, I represent the historical society, the, Chester Arthur Church on the hill in East Fairfield, um, I believe it's called the North, North Fairfield Baptist Church, thank you. Uh, so the state is actually looking at transferring ownership, um, away from state ownership. So there's, uh, I believe there's a person in East Fairfield that does home church services, um, and they were interested in actually starting services in that church. So the state and that resident have been talking, um, so there's potentially going to be a group from the state coming in to help clean up the building, um, but I just wanted to bring that at everyone's attention in case anybody has any issues with that property being transferred to church ownership, essentially. And I, I don't know when that would occur, it'd probably be middle, uh, next year or this year.
Well, we need to talk if that's directly linked to the cemetery, I'm sorry. We'll need to talk if that's directly linked with the cemetery next to it, which makes it a historical site, and if we pass that off, we'll be still be a historical site. And if we pass that off, it'll be still be a historical site. So I'd like to catch up with you and keep talking to you about that. That directly links with the glider.
Thanks.
Is there anything, Tori, that would guarantee that once that was transferred to an individual, that that individual then could be selected for profit?
I, I'm not sure. I'm sure there's got to be some kind of covenant in there, like, in perpetuity, that it has to be a church entity. But I'm not, I'm not sure at all, because I had the same question.
Any other discussion for today from a non-biased nature? Okay, here we're done, we'll move on to the final article. All right, I would entertain a motion at this point to adjourn. So moved by Tom Hargan and a second, John Maxer. Thank you, everyone. Have a great rest of your day.